The March fourth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners to or at this time recognizing the fact that we do have a quorum. At this time, before we enter into that invocation, I'd like to make a comment, please. And that is in reference to former County Commissioner Curtis Bradger, who passed away February seventh of twenty twenty four. Mr. Bradger was the first African-American Commissioner in Person County and served as a Person County Commissioner for a total of sixteen years and a consummate gentleman, always with the people on his mind and in his decision-making process. So a very noble person that we had serving on this board for sixteen years. So we have a moment of silence, after which we will be led in the invocation by Commissioner Sims. Pray with me.
If you will, pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. You have blessed us with, and we thank you for allowing us to be here at our County Commissioner meeting tonight. We ask that you would lead us and guide us and help us make wise decisions for our county. And we ask that you would watch out for our law enforcement, our EMS, those who are every day out giving their lives, taking chances on their lives. And we just pray that you will watch after them. And while we pray for our military, we pray for peace, not only here in our country but abroad. And we ask that you would, when we leave here tonight, that you would give us safe travels back home. And we pray this in your most heavenly name. Amen.
We are honored tonight to have members of Troop Two Sixty to be in the audience. And these Boy Scouts are working on the merit badge for citizenship in the community. And those members are Bryson Gregory, Daniel Pulliam, M.C. Williams, and Ryan Charlo. And would you young men come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Will everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young men. And you stay as long as you like, but there's no time limit for us tonight. But I know tomorrow is an important day for you still in school. But an honor to have you here. Thank you for coming. First on our agenda is discussion and adjustment and approval of the agenda as presented.
Mr. President, Chair of the Board.
We have one item we need to remove. That is, closed session number one. Closed session number one will be removed from the agenda. Therefore, item number two will become one, and number three will become two.
Can you speak into the mic?
Is that motion clear? I mean, statement clear? We have a motion.
Motion made. Motion made, Chair of the Board.
We have a motion with the removal of closed session number one removed. Any further discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, non-motion carried. Item number one is proclamation recognizing March as Social Worker Month. And we do have a proclamation here to read, and I'll read that for us, too. Social Work Month, twenty twenty four proclamation empowering social workers. Whereas social work is a profession truly dedicated to helping people. And whereas the primary mission of social work is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic and complex needs of all people. And whereas social workers focus on helping people who are vulnerable, oppressed, or living in poverty. And whereas social workers follow a code of ethics that calls on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people. And whereas social workers meet people where they are and help people and communities reach their full potential. And whereas social workers are on the front lines in helping this nation solve pressing social problems, including an increased demand for mental health services, an opioid addiction crisis, and economic inequity. And whereas social workers are in high demand, with shortages in social work staffing, and Bureau of Labor Statistics predicting social work will be one of the fastest-growing professions in our nation during this decade. And whereas the twenty twenty four Social Work Month theme, empowering social workers, embodies the need for the society to support social workers so they can continue to do the life-affirming work that they do and help address social needs. And whereas social workers in turn empower people, communities, and our nation, helping everyone achieve their full potential. And now therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Person County social workers, the Person County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of March twenty twenty four as Social Work Month and calls upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in Person County in celebration and support of social work profession. Adopted this the fourth day of March twenty twenty four, signed Gordon Powell, Person Board of County Commissioners, and Michelle Solomon, Clerk to the Board. So, Mr. Paylor, if you're here, you'd come up and accept this. Thank you. Thank you, your department, for all you do.
Appreciate it.
Sir. Okay, do we have a motion for approval of that proclamation as I've just read? Have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Item number two on our agenda is public, public hearing, consideration of approval for a private roadway lookout ridge. Do we have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Have a motion to open the public hearing, any discussion? You're none, all in favor? Aye. So, Ms. Vaughn, you're up. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. In nineteen seventy nine, the Red Mountain Estates subdivision was created off of Moores Mill Road. At the time, road names were not required for each road within the subdivision. A recent uptick in land sales and residential development within the subdivision has necessitated the naming of one of these previously unnamed private roads. We've been in discussions with the developer about this. Currently, there's only one piece of land that is owned by a citizen. The remainder is owned by a developer. And their intent is to sell and build at least three homes on this private roadway, which necessitates the naming of that road. The citizen and the developer have agreed to Lookout Ridge Way, which is consistent with our local ordinance. And we have, are holding this public hearing and have advertised it in the newspaper and on-site, as required by North Carolina general statutes. Are there any questions?
Questions? You're none. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment in favor or opposed to this motion?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, there are no individuals on opposition or in favor of.
Makes it easy. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Any discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Thank you. Item number three is consideration to grant or deny. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the recommended roadway name.
Have a motion for approval, any further discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Thank you. At this point, in our Commissioners' meeting, we do have public informal comments at this time. We have a ten-minute period set aside for public comments. Do we have speakers?
Yes, sir. We have seven individuals.
Okay. And you go ahead and call the first one.
All right, a time limit, please.
Uh, two minutes. We're gonna have to do two.
All right, can we have IT please set the time limit for two minutes per speaker? The first speaker is Susan Jock.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
For my two minutes, I just want to read a letter that I wrote in early January to the Courier-Times, the letter to the editor. And this is a letter from me. I watched the County Commissioners' meeting on January second and was pretty shocked to hear Charlie Palmer claim that the December fourth meeting, when the Commissioners voted to rezone agricultural land to heavy industrial so that a liquid natural gas storage facility could be built, was, quote, insane, and that most of the people who spoke in opposition to the facility were not from Person County but were, quote, "paid to be here," end quote. I have lived in Person County for over thirty years. I knew almost all the people who spoke and a fair number of the people who were in the audience in opposition to the Mariah Energy Center. I can say without any hesitation that the people there were from Person County or northern Durham County and that no one was paid to be there. We were all there because we care. Derek Sims, in his closing-
Ma'am, would you please refrain from identifying you speaking to the entire board? You've been here before, so you know that, so.
Right. Oh, I'm just reading the letter. Is it not okay to use?
I would.
All right, I will take the name out.
Thank you very much.
A Commissioner in his closing comments implied that the December fourth meeting is not, quote, "who we are in Person County." In fact, it is exactly who we are: caring people who will fight to keep Person County good and strong and rural and beautiful. Any outburst at the end of a civil, respectful two hours was the result of our Commissioners choosing not to listen to us, not to respect our views and evidence, and not to respond respectfully. The December fourth meeting ended with people chanting "shame," and that is the appropriate word to end this letter: shame. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Joseph DiBiase.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for-
Good afternoon.
Mr. Powell, did you say something?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I know you said good afternoon.
I said good afternoon.
Thank you for having me here tonight and taking your time. I'd like to address the Woodsdale property. I'm a direct neighbor of that parcel, which I'm sure you're all familiar with now. I interviewed Mr. Willoughby, so he will put it on the record. I am not here to be a spearpoint of any political agenda at all. I am here because I live exactly adjacent to that land. At one point, those twelve acres belonged to the Dorothy Brooks property, which I currently own. Construction that had started early in November came to some concern. It starts off mostly with the additional parcels that are on Woodsdale Road and the cutting in and the forestry that went on, on those lots. Additionally, after that, heavy equipment came in, it pushed in the side of the pond, at which point it got to the far back, which is directly over the train tracks to my land. Mostly, my concern was what's going on, right? They're tearing the woods down, they're building roads, they're lighting trees on fire all weekend long. And most of the departments that I've gone to, I had my intelligence, obviously, was certainly not taken into consideration. I asked pointed questions, and I was told zoning has no idea what's going on, building has no idea what's going on. I asked for phone calls to be made with more prominent people than me in the community. Again, the answer was, nobody knows what's going on. I did go on several occasions to Business and Industry. They did not know what was going on. I was actually told where my intelligence gets insulted is that, well, there's a lot of logging going on in Woodsdale. I said, well, it's taking place on the land that you're responsible for. So some concerns, obviously, rose from this with myself and my neighbors. As the prod continued, the construction continued, more trucking came in, and then rubber mats showed up. I took pictures of the mats, I looked them up online, they were containment mats and also sandbags to build a containment site, a layover pad, which then brings up a lot of other concerns, what's going on the pad. So mostly, myself and my neighbors would like to know what really is going on back there. We've heard various different things. I'm kind of an approachable guy, did talk to the construction workers when they were back there. One of the truck drivers said, well, we're gonna drop off extra material, which is, which is ash from the plant that normally goes to certain teat, but we have no place to put it. So that's kind of alarming. At that point, still getting no answers from any of the departments, right, and feeling kind of left out in the cold, I called the DEQ. So they came down, they met me in my driveway about a week later, and a very nice gentleman, his name is Isaac, and he explained to me that he was gonna go and take a look at what was going on, on the land, and get back to me. When he came back, he said there are no permits issued at all, and that basically he was gonna look into it. He did take the moral high ground and decided that I'm sure the paperwork is going to catch up with the project. This has constantly been under the guise of due diligence, due diligence. Now, we all here, live here and know what due diligence is if we purchased a home. There is nobody here that's going to put that kind of construction into any project while they're doing their due diligence. Completely tore down the woods, they pushed in the side of a pond, they built a layover mat, all under the guise of due diligence. It's basically fast-tracked. Whatever this project is, is getting fast-tracked with no answer on what the operations are gonna be, how the operations are gonna run, what the collateral damages. Obviously, there's collateral pollution, light pollution, noise pollution, the destruction of the environment, and we'd like to know what's going on with that. Again, really no answers. So when Isaac then put kind of a stop on the job, which he told me he was putting a stop on the job, and then they had to, again, submit for permits and start with some oversight. Again, oversight, right? We don't go to a restaurant and want to eat when no one's overseeing that the kitchen is clean. So we would like to know that whatever's being built back there is being built under some sort of government oversight correctly.
Let me remind you, you have two minutes.
Yes, sir.
I respect you, but we have others.
Yes, no problem. So with that being said, I would hope that we do start to get some answers, that someone starts to look into this. It's very obvious what's taking place back there. This is a fast-track construction project, and, you know, we're looking, like I said, again, no DOT approvals, no, in a normal situation, I would think if you go to do your due diligence, you would go out, see what the land can sustain before any of this construction takes place or temporary roads are built, very dangerous area. Two young boys died on my front lawn this summer. That is a very treacherous piece of road, and now we've got truck traffic coming in and out of the train tracks. So I would hope that, I would like to invite you gentlemen, ladies, out to take a look. I think it would be better to look at the site and have a better understanding than what I can explain to you in two minutes that's taken place over five months. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Andrea Childers.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea Childers. I have lived in Person County for thirty-one years. I would like to request that this board reverse the rezoning of the four hundred and forty-plus rural acres in southeast Person County that you did on December fourth, twenty twenty-three. It is my understanding that some of the Commissioners toured the Cary facility and were impressed with safety measures. Dominion has in their place, has in place there. What Dominion Energy plans to construct approximately twenty-three hundred feet from my home is in no way comparable to the facility in Cary. I know, I've been there, I've looked at it, too. Not the least of which, if an accident were to occur, Cary would be far more equipped to handle it than our small county that has very few resources. Cary would be far more equipped to handle it than our small county that has very few resources. And to highlight my point of the last meeting, no one from this community was invited to tour the Cary facility. No one sat down with the future neighbors of Dominion and shared what they had seen or learned on that tour. It was mentioned that the residents who oppose this facility are spreading incorrect information. It is not our intention to spread, disseminate misinformation. We are piecing together how MECC will be constructed with a snapshot of information given to us in a loud room with people only providing their first names. We wrote down our questions for Dominion, but no responses came. We need a panel of commissioners in Dominion to answer our questions about the construction of the Mariah Energy Center. Neighbors need to be allowed to tour the site during and after the construction regularly to see what's happening back there. If there's nothing to hide, this should not be a problem. I was disturbed at how easily possible damage to our environment was dismissed by one of our commissioners. We need a comprehensive environmental impact study conducted before any ground is disturbed. My last thing. And I brought you into a plentiful country to eat the fruit thereof and the goodness thereof. But when ye entered, ye defiled my land and made mine heritage an abomination. Jeremiah 2:7.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Katie Moore.
Good evening, commissioners. I'll wait until my time is up there.
Go ahead, when you're ready.
Sure. My name is Katie Moore. I'm a resident of Person County. I spoke with you all at the last commissioners' meeting as well. I'm here in opposition to the Mariah Energy Center and to request that you all reverse your decision, your rezoning decision that was made late last year. As Andrea mentioned, residents living near to the proposed facility submitted over six pages of questions to you all about the project. They included questions about the economic impact of the project, zoning, the construction, the process by which the plant had been approved, the location, as well as environmental and health concerns. None of these questions were answered by the commissioners, and we still have them, along with additional questions that have come up along the way. One that I feel particularly concerned about, as someone who has worked with communities who live next to these sorts of facilities, is how any kind of accident would be handled by the largely volunteer fire departments around the facility. Additionally, I met recently with some of the community members who wrote those questions. They were, they told me that the construction company who met with them said that they did not know how they were gonna get equipment into and out of the site. The roads, I'm sure you all have been on them, they're small, the bridges have limited weight capacity. There are real questions here that I think anyone who lives in that area would understand and be concerned about, and that we have not heard answers on. Again, as Andrea mentioned, commissioners have mentioned that they toured the Cary facility. We believe that this facility is, in fact, not similar enough to what would be constructed here. The environment is different. Cary is a different place than Person County, as y'all are well aware. Additionally, Dominion, who is constructing the plant, likely will sell to Inbridge, a Canadian company that has a horrible environmental record, and we have real questions about how community members may get relief if and when there is an accident at the facility. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christopher Clayton.
Good evening, members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've spoken to y'all before, but I'm back again. How y'all doing? Still got a lot of questions to be answered, still waiting. I live directly across the street on Helena Mariah Road. I'd like to know when those answers, those questions are gonna be answered. You know, I think that's y'all's job to, for the community. And appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Lisa Bratcher.
I'm just gonna be real brief here. I sent you all an email on the twentieth of February. It was an email that was researched, provided information for you all. It provided state information as well on the Woodsdale parcels. It was sent to everybody on the Board of Commissioners, it was sent to the city manager, it was sent to everybody on the Economic Development Commission. Not one of you responded. Then I sent another email, sent another email on the twenty-third, no, excuse me, it was on the twenty-sixth of February, and the only response I got was from the county manager. I see and I'm hearing from everybody that there's a problem here with sending correspondence out to the people that you represent, and that's a problem. This is not Washington, D.C., but it's turning into Washington, D.C. And I hate to say it, but it looks like there's a cover-up. So I'm asking you all to respond to the people who put you in those seats. We respect you, you need to respect us.
The last speaker we had is John Seate.
Evening.
Good evening, sir.
It's been a while. Good to see you all. A little different tonight. Past interactions, mostly me struggling trying to hold a few of you to some general community standards. Little different tonight. Joe did a good job covering the Woodsdale concerns that he has as a neighbor. There's been a lot of factual information put out there. I want to thank Ethel for answering questions, as well as staff, as I researched it from Florida. I own over a hundred acres in the county, and if I was to do what has been done on the property that's owned by P C B I C, I'd be in trouble. And yet, you guys want us to behave appropriately when you have illegal R B parks, you've got people who used to be E D C directors that are now consultants on such projects. Someone opened the meeting appropriately with a prayer, praying for wisdom, but in December a couple of years ago made a motion to remove somebody from the E D C because the person couldn't get along. And yet, you guys have been set up by the very cronies that you run around with, such as Philip Allen, who owns this. He dumped it in your laps. He should resign. I'm glad that he can get along with people, but we need competent people representing county. People don't even know what's going on, haven't authorized it. What Joe didn't say is, the land isn't zoned appropriately and no permits have been pulled. And yet, all kinds of shenanigans are being done, and they're being done in the county's name. I wasn't here for the loud meeting, but I'll have to agree. Shame, shame, shame. You guys need to straighten out that E D C, probably get rid of the E D C, get the B I C working the way it should be, and restore some order, and maybe get some respect back. So that'd be my recommendation as a taxpayer, because I don't want to be, I don't want to do anything with my property that's in line with what some of these folks have done: P C B I C, and you know the other names. And, oh, by the way, Ms. Wilburn should get elected. I am hoping that she is not assigned to the E D C, if it's still in existence, as a representative, as I believe the chair of this board was unaware of exactly what ended up being dumped in everybody's laps here. So my condolences to you. I think the E D C and the P C B I C wears this, and I'd like to see them take accountability for it, not you guys, unless, of course, you guys own it too. So the community would like to know, and it seems like there's been a communications breakdown. And so for those of you that are running for office, prove it. Talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our speaker registration for tonight.
Okay. Item number four on the agenda is discussion, adjustment, and approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion on the floor for approval, further discussion. You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. View business, item number five, options for evaluation of social services. Mr. Brownheart.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening. Before I begin, I want to just share that myself and Director Carlton Paylor earlier today attended a training at the U N C School of Government related to the legal basics around the provision of social services. And I just thought it was pretty fitting. It was really informative, and I thought it was pretty fitting that it happened during National Social Work Month. So I want to thank you all for acknowledging March as Social Work Month, and I also want to acknowledge and thank his staff for what they do, for the residents of Person County. This particular agenda item is a follow-up to what was discussed at the previous Board of Commissioners meeting as it relates to options or securing an option for the consulting services for the Department of Social Services. On February the twenty-third, two consultants whom we have had previous conversations with were provided with the scope of work, that scope of work document that contained five different objectives, the first of which was to assist with board development and professional development for the C H S A director. Second was to examine and evaluate county and departmental compliance with statutorily mandated programs and filings. A third was to evaluate the customer-client experience. A fourth was to evaluate the work environment and employee experience. And last but not least, the fifth objective in that document was to review and evaluate current recruitment and compensation strategies within the department. And we received two responses, one from Allies for Outcomes and a second from C C R Consulting. These responses, or a summary of these responses, is included in your agenda packet. A couple of things that I'll highlight from the responses. First, as it relates to the objective that pertained to board development, which I know was a priority for this body. The responses from Allies for Outcomes kind of convey steps that this board has actually already taken. And the response from C C R Consulting referenced assisting with the development of a missioning, a mission and visioning process which could help the board target its current mission and value statements to help to specific human services goals. So I thought that was a stark contrast in the two proposals. And then, lastly, and perhaps more importantly, I'll highlight the proposed timeline and maximum proposed budget from both entities. Allies for Outcomes indicated that they would take approximately six months to assist and provide some feedback or feedback forward for the commissioners and the Consolidated Human Services Director to follow up on. And they approximated that their work with the county in this effort would not exceed a hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. In contrast, C C R Consulting proposed a timeline of about twelve months at seven thousand dollars per month. And so I think there is a stark contrast in the differences in terms of the budget. But based upon my conversations with them, as well as some exploratory conversations that we've had with other counties who've worked with both entities, my recommendation as conveyed in the agenda packet was to support, or contract, rather, with C C R Consulting. Are there any questions or concerns?
Questions of Mr. Hart? I have several. You say P C R?
No, no, sorry, C C R.
C C R. Where are they out of?
They are, that was conveyed in the last, in the last presentation, but I believe they are out of Charlotte. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Both entities are very familiar with North Carolina statutes and the provision of human services within the state. I believe the other agency, Allies for Outcomes, is based out of, maybe kind of near Buncombe County, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you.
Buncombe?
Yes, sir.
And the timeline is twelve months for both, or just that C C R?
No, Allies for Outcomes proposed a twelve-month period or timeframe, and, I'm sorry, C C R. Yes, you're correct, you're correct. C C R proposed a twelve-month timeframe, and Allies for Outcome proposed a six-month timeframe.
I'd like to add that I've spoken with a guardian at Lightem twice in the last couple of months that handled the De Young case. And she mentioned that the attorney that handles services for the D S S typically, well, has sixty days to get the cases resolved, placement and foster or adoption. And in this case, it took six months. Another concern, she hopes we will implement a, I'm sorry, I can't read my own writing. Implement an, whatever. With all parties, make sure that we contact all parties for their input. Stakeholders and guardian at Lightems that are handling these cases. Also, we should look at the metrics of how long processing takes and the time, timelines of processing these cases. Note, she mentioned that also that they are all volunteers. They get paid twenty-five cents a mile. They do not get paid for expenses that they incur on, like buying a child a pair of shoes or whatever, feeding them. These are volunteers. They're giving their hearts and tons of time on each case, and in every case, money out of their pockets. I would like to think that we would take a little bit more time to review what you have presented to us, and just my opinion, I don't know how others feel, but I think we need to look into both of these prospects.
Mr. Chairman, before we, and I didn't want to interrupt, that's a lot of no-ways in the hallway.
Okay, thank you.
And can, can the hallway be clearer so that the commissioners can hear all the comments?
Anyway, the sheriffs were back, the sheriffs were back there, I don't know where they're at now. I think what Commissioner Palmer is saying here, he wants to be sure that the workers are heard because they've been there, done that. And the way I look at both of those in different places on the information that we have, that will certainly be part of the-
Oh, absolutely.
-started process.
Yeah.
That they will be given opportunities to share, such as what Commissioner Palmer said, and much more. So I think he could rest, yeah, go ahead.
Well, and I apologize, if I may, so the objective, the third objective that was on the scope of work document that was provided to both consulting agencies speaks directly to what you're referring to as it is, that that objective was to evaluate customer and client experience. And both of these options, both of these firms are really astute in doing that. One proposed individual interviews with D S S clients and focus groups with families and parents, resource parents, judicial partners and citizens. And the other agency, so the first that I just read, that was Allies for Outcomes. The other agency, C C R Consulting, said that they would adhere to strategies outlined in the county's R F I, which they refer to the scope of work objective. But then they also went on to say that they would also recommend in-depth conversations with both nonprofit and community partners to be- nonprofit and community partners to be used to solicit client concerns and issues with county human services delivery, responsiveness and access. I think that relates to what you're referring to and what you're wanting to achieve through this evaluation.
What I'm trying to help her with, right. And she also mentioned that she's very pleased to know that we will have survey sheets for the clients that use DSS.
Yeah, and so I have had, you know, I've had multiple conversations and communications with both of these agencies. You know, County Manager Kathy is familiar with both agencies. We were specifically, County Manager Kathy reached out, and, and we were also provided with some options from the DSS Department themselves, and after reviewing the options that we were provided, these two emerged as the top two options. And again, this summary of responses was prepared in order to give you all kind of a high-level overview of what both agencies are proposing as it relates to evaluating the department. I would, I would just kind of remind that, as I kind of alluded to, we have also talked to some other, you know, counties who have worked with these agencies as well, so we feel really confident about both of these agencies' abilities to support, you know, our consolidation efforts and ensuring that we are well-versed in what needs to be done from our end as well.
So, one more topic here. Allies for Outcomes timeframe?
Six months.
Six months. CCR, 12 months.
12 months.
So this is gonna be outside of the timeframe that we consolidate.
Well, it would kind of begin with, they would do it, they would begin this assessment, you know, kind of aligned with the consolidation in order to help, you know, us through those first months of year or so of it.
Hold up the process.
Right, it will not hold up the process, it will just help to guide and steer the process a bit so that we're being intentional in our efforts.
Okay, for clarity, CCR, you've got $7,000 a month for an equal of $86,400? Now, is it gonna take this whole timeframe, you think?
So these are what they, what these agencies proposed, given the guidance that I received or that we received this evening from the board, we could kind of drill down and get more specifics, but these, what you see in front of you is based upon what was proposed.
The feedback they gave you.
Yes, sir, that's correct, yeah.
I appreciate you bringing this forward. I still think that we need a little bit more time to, for us to process this ourselves individually.
And I would just
Outside of a crowd, so I can put it in my brain, in my figuring, everybody here can, and then we come back at a different date and choose which route it's you. That's my suggestion.
One day in the year, I'm sorry.
And I would like to make a motion to table this until
Before we go into the motion, I'd like to, if anybody has any more comments, I just had
You go ahead, if you've got one.
I just, I mean, when I look at this, I'm looking at six months up to $166,740, or approximately 12 months for $7,000 a month for 86,400. That's a big difference to me in what the county's going to pay for this service. So, is it, do we push it to really quick, do things, six months, or do we go 12 months? And again, it's 12 months, it's not costing anymore, actually less than if we go six months at 166.
If you'll note right below that, 45% will be taken care of, the other will be taken care of from DSS fund balance.
That's, that is correct, we can do a budget amendment to move funds from the DSS fund balance for the consultant, and we do anticipate that approximately 45% will be reimbursed to the county from state and federal funding.
But that is, I'm just saying it's cheaper than, you know, obviously 86 is cheaper than 166.
Sure.
Whoever's paying the bill is, obviously will be saving them money.
Right, yes, and the, as I see it, the CCR Consulting, over a longer period of time, will be available to be a resource to us in the transition period. Allies for Outcomes is a more accelerated approach over a six-month period, but the other will provide, you know, a longer look and a longer opportunity to work together in implementing their recommendations and supporting staff.
We, we do have a motion on the floor, any further discussions about that motion?
I would say if Commissioners Palmer's, the motion to table it is approved, that in the meantime, that we direct staff to give a more pinpointed hard start date and end date, we have approximately 12 months, if we go with CCR, that's approximate, but I'd like a, kind of a hard start date and when a hard end date, could it be 10 months? Could it be 11 months? And kind of pinpoint it down to the specifics with it.
That, that, that is certainly doable. I would add that they are likely to, particularly with CCR, they are likely to support whatever direction that we would wish to go in. Yes.
And both consultants are prepared to work with the board through that orientation process that we are hoping to have scheduled prior to the April 15th date, but we will need to make a decision on this, you know, as far as moving forward, so they'll have time to work with us in preparation of that orientation process for the consolidated, for you all serving as the Consolidated Human Services Board by April 15th, assuming those duties.
One question for Mr. Palmer, garden, your motion, would you be open to table it until the next meeting?
Sure.
For a scheduled meeting?
That's two weeks, that's plenty of time.
Okay, and it can be discussed then, because the clock is ticking on this.
Exactly. That's my, that's my concern, and two, we do have, if we're looking at CCR, 12 months, not to hold it to that, I would like to see it done sooner, nine, 10, whatever, but, but sooner, and I'm sure that would be okay too. But to, to go ahead with the process, so we don't worry. You know, being this is a much smaller county than Buncombe or Charlotte, you would think you could get it done in half this timeframe.
But that's just where those, that's just where those entities are based. That, that is not necessarily about, like, who they work with, excuse me.
Across the state.
Right, they work with, yeah, they work with counties across the state, and they, they did take into account and to consideration the size of our county in developing this proposal, so, or their proposals, so they are, yeah.
I think two weeks is plenty of time for us to stand up for that. Further discussion, so we have a motion to table until the next board meeting.
And to direct staff to come up with some more concrete dates, which could be less than 12 months.
Any other discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda is appointments to boards and committees. Clerk Solomon.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members. I'd like to present to you a citizen application tonight for our current vacancy that we have on one of our boards and committees. It is for the Animal Services Advisory Committee. You should have in your packet a application from a citizen by the name of Deputy Sheriff Canine Handler Kirsten Brain. She has requested appointment for this position. This will be an unexpired term, she will be filling through the end of June of 2024.
Motion to appoint, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to appoint. Further discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get you out of here in time for voting tomorrow. For Chairman's report, I have a couple of things. Duke Energy had an open house recently, and some in the audience I saw there, and they did a good job of being open and transparent about their plans for Person County with future generations here in Person County. We did have, have a visitor, Ted Budd, was here and visiting our Bets Park and the monuments that we have there by Charter's of Freedom recently, and that was, that was a good event and well-attended as well. There was a video or film agency, or whom are they, what are they called? The Fishing University was here to do a, do a film on Person County and Mayo Park in particular, so they were here last week, and look forward to seeing that production, and then it's gonna be on TV at some point. We did have a coffee hour recently at PCC Education Foundation, and I had a very good description of what's going on within the foundation and the, the plans they have and the fundings they need. And then today, we had a groundbreaking ceremony at PI and the Recycling Center, which was groundbreaking for the new construction that will take place there, and we had Commissioner Thomas and Perry Year and Sims and myself there, very well-attended, something we've worked on for quite some time coming to fruition. And I will add one comment that I would have been inappropriate earlier, but we had some speakers reference a list of questions that had been presented. I did, in some of my stacks of paper, I found those about two weeks ago. I mailed hard copies to Dominion for their responses, and I'm not sure exactly how nor when that will come, but I suppose it'll come, hopefully, very soon to answer each one of those individually and get some answers there, so, did that. And don't forget to vote tomorrow, if you haven't already, and that's, that's an important part of what we do in America. Manager Kathy.
I'd just like to note that earlier on the consent agenda, the commissioners did approve an amendment to their rules of procedures and to their meeting schedule, so our night meetings moving forward will begin at 6:00 PM. So then we'll have an earlier start time, beginning with the meeting April 1st, and they have also set an ending time of 10:00 PM for the meetings unless there's a vote of the board to continue past 10:00 PM, so just so everybody's aware of the earlier start time.
Commissioner Sims?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Boy Scouts for coming out today and being with us and doing lead us into pledge allegiance. Did a great job, and thank you for coming out. Secondly, you know, in every meeting, we've heard about Dominion Energy, and certainly comments that I know that I have made. Again, I'm not a engineer, I'm not a, in no means by that, but I am an Environmental Health and Safety Manager. I do care about the environment, and in that particular case, I know people have said Cary's not the same as what's going to be built out here at Dominion, but I will stick to my guns, and I will say this, that the Cary facility was, their safety procedures, their protocols, their emergency procedures were all in check, and, and I will only leave it at that, I won't go any further, but I will say, when I toured that plant, I was very happy with what I saw from a safety standpoint. That's all.
Commissioner Palmer? First of all, I would like to apologize for missing the groundbreaking today, but I was probably in Pelham, North Carolina, when y'all were doing the groundbreaking, fixing the well pump. Okay, Charter's of Freedom, we've been on this topic for several months. I'll give you all a copy of how you can do a, a brick, or you can do the bronze plaques. There are copies back here in the hallway at the very end on the bench, for any of your public, that you want to donate. What it is, is these, these memorials or pedestals we have across the street, you'll see them when you leave, they're lit up, kind of like a blue looking, I'm colorblind, so it looked blue to me, but you pay it forward, and this primarily was paid forward with a lot of volunteer help from this county. It's for any citizen, you can do a, it's called a paver instead of a brick, where you can start out at a thousand dollar minimum for a bronze plaque, and it goes on up to like five grand. I wouldn't expect anybody to go to five grand, but it'd be great if you could. It's a wonderful addition to this county, it's very worthy to have for our schoolchildren to visit during a school day. I'm happy to say that I, I did my homework as soon as it brought, sentiment was brought out, and I made a sizable donation. On another note On another note, I asked Manager Kathy last week or the week before to get, Ms. Strickland, Kim, you here? Public Information Officer? She's not here, anyway, she was earlier. To put something on our county website in regards to what I see every day, just about every day, I seen two today, that young man right there, I saw him with me, just running, running loose. He says he do it all the time, and that's one block from my house. And I'll state it again, I don't know how many times I've stated, it is, it is shocking, it's alarming, that I have to go out of my door every time I walk my dog, three times a day, 4:30 in the morning, 3:00 in the afternoon, 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night, and I have to be armed to the teeth because I am afraid that he's gonna get attacked again by another pit bull, and I'm not gonna take it. If you will, wherever she is, could you please put this on our county website? The, the same article that you put in the carrier?
We can put information on the website, yes, sir. We didn't write the article that appeared in the paper.
You didn't write that, you just give them some information.
We provided information, but we did not write it.
Okay, well
Go ahead. Well, it's okay, and so, with the Sheriff's Office managing animal control, and also that's a function of the city, Kim is working with them to get some additional information that we can post and share on the website that is in alignment with their current practices. So, we do have to make sure that we work with the departments who are responsible for those functions to develop that information and make it available, but we are, Kim is working on that.
I know you mentioned that last week when you and I talked, and I was hoping she was aware of that, and we can get it done ASAP. There's, I can't count the many times that I've run into pit bulls, bulldogs, rottweilers, chupis, I call them, it is alarming, especially at night. But I would ask you guys to please put something together and put it on the county website, because most, I'd say half of the county does not read the carrier. Just my guess. Anyway. That's all I have. Thank you. Commissioner Perry Year?
Mr. Chairman, just want to echo what you said, it was a great event today with PI and the ribbon cutting, staff has done a great job with that, and it was well-attended, and I was proud to be there. Also, would like to thank the Boy Scouts for being here, glad you witnessed your first county commissioner meeting, hope you come back, thank you again for being here, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I would like to echo what y'all said, that I had the honor of speaking today at the PI merger, and want to thank Amanda Dolls for all her hard work for putting that together and getting, getting that ball rolling, and we look forward to seeing that facility come, come together.
That's it, well done.
All done. Next, we're about to go into closed session, but a comment here, or comment or two related to our closed sessions, and maybe a little bit of a change to help expedite that process and maybe not keep us here till midnight anymore, but all closed sessions will include County Manager Kathy, Clerk Solomon, and County Attorney Morpheus. And what we'll do there is go into closed session number one now for property acquisition with the following, allowed to attend Mr. Rafe Shie and Amy Wormberg, and followed by closed session number two, to preserve the attorney-client privilege in matters related to the lawsuit Clayton versus Person County. So, we're again, when we go into closed session, we will remain there until both those are completed and then come back in the open session. So, do we have a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
Okay. One would be for General Statute 143-318-1184, and the, no, 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 that's the wrong one. 143-318-1185, that was the one I marked out. And then the other would be 143-318-1183. Now.
So moved.
Have a motion go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, no motion.
Well, you're in here, I guess I got to stay.
No, yeah.
No, yeah.